I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for September 4th, 2018. Invite you to stand with me if you choose as Bowling Green Police Chaplain Joe Cozy offers our invitation and I'll lead in our Pledge of Allegiance. Ash Cozy.
As we pray together. Father in heaven, we thank you, Lord, for these members of our government and our city commission and those who serve our community, who give of themselves to help this fair city become the best that it can be. We pray, Father, that you would give to them knowledge and wisdom to do what is right, not just what is popular, that you would give them patience to be objective, to hear all sides of the question, including yours. Lord, would you keep them safe, keep their families safe from evil and all that would seek to harm them? Give us a good meeting, and we ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nash?
Here.
Commissioner Perigin?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Denning, who is absent, and Mayor Wilkerson.
Here.
Do we have any awards or recognitions tonight? You have some comments, Mr. Mizel.
Thought I did, but...
I don't feel me either.
I don't see that person that was going to be here, so...
The B K U is supposed to be here to talk about their new bicycle program. If they happen to show up at a...
Yeah.
Point where we can take a break into it, I'll jump right on it then. Is that the only item that you have, sir? Is that the only thing you have?
That's it.
Okay. First thing is approval of minutes from our regular meeting on August 24th, 21st, 2018.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Williams. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2018-36.
Ordinance relating to classification pay schedules. Ordinance amending the classification pay schedules G for general classified and D for department head management employees of the City of Bowling Green for fiscal year 2019.
I'm moved.
Second.
A Perigin, second by Williams, second reading of our adjustments for the adjustments we made within city hall staff. Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2018-37.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 2.01 acres from AG Agriculture and RS1A Single Family Residential to RS1A Single Family Residential located at Zero Greenview Lane presently owned by Sandra Franklin.
I'm moved.
Second. By Williams, second by Nash. Second reading of a unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning. Are there any further comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2018-38.
Ordinance relating to property tax rates. Ordinance setting 2018 property tax rates, franchise tax rates, and improvement assessment rates, and setting forth guidelines for payment, penalty, and interest.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Williams. Again, second reading of our property tax rates, which are actually going down a very small amount from 20.6 to 20.5 cents per hundred. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2018-169.
Municipal order approving the promotion of T. Landry Spears to the position of building maintenance mechanic in the Public Works Department.
I'm moved.
Second.
Nash, second by Williams, Mr. Mizel.
Yes, with the retirement of Anthony Armour, we had a vacancy, and I'd like to ask Greg Meredith to come up, our public works director, make his recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Mayor, city commission. Recently, the Public Works Department received four applications and interviewed four candidates for the building maintenance mechanic position in our facilities maintenance division, management division, excuse me. On the selection panel were Tiger Thule, David Hayner, Bobby Phelps, and myself. All the candidates were outstanding, which made the decision difficult. Thomas Spears, who goes by his middle name Landry, was chosen through that process. Landry, if you would stand, all right. Mr. Spears has been employed by the City of Bowling Green since 2013. He began as a landscape gardener and was then transferred to park maintenance as a senior parks facility maintainer. Prior to working with the city, Landry worked at Indian Hills Country Club on the grounds turf management section and assisted the golf superintendent with irrigation for the course. Landry even worked for a brief period of time on the Augusta National Course, so back in 2011. Not only is Landry skilled in turf management, but he also has experience with operating equipment essential to those tasks. He has a Class A commercial driver's license, N3 pesticide applicator's license, and basic plumbing and electrical experience. Landry has a reputation among his coworkers as being a hard worker with great people skills and as a quick learner. It's, in summary, it's my pleasure to recommend Mr. Spears as our new building maintenance mechanic for the Public Works Department, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Here's your congratulations on your promotion. Thank you for the work thus far and give you our prayers for going forward with Mr. Meredith and his career. Congratulations. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2018-170.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Hunter Harris in the position of broadcast specialist in the office of city manager.
I'm moved.
Second.
A Perigin, second by Williams, Mr. Mizel.
Had a vacancy that occurred back in October 2017 in this position. We've been outsourcing a lot of things, and I would like to ask our new HR director, Erin Holes, he'd come up and make her, make the recommendation for the appointment of this position.
Welcome, Erin.
Afternoon. Thank you, board. So, as Mr. Mizel said, this position became vacant in October of 2017. This person is going to be performing video and broadcast programming services for the city and departments, doing live and other recorded activity. This position will also help promote the city and its program and services to the public through the video programming. We received 23 applications for the broadcast specialist position. Thirteen of those applications were passed on to the department for review, and five candidates were selected to be interviewed by the department. After the interviews, we asked three of the candidates to complete a special video project. Two candidates submitted a video, and the third withdrew their application. The interview panel consisted of Kim Lancaster and Laura Harris from the Public Information Officer, Brad Stinson from IT Department, and Tiger Thule from the HR Department. We have selected Hunter Harris for the position. He currently owns Harris Visuals LLC. Like to stand or wave. Hunter Harris has been the one who has generally been contracted to do some of the broadcasting projects since the position has been vacated since 2017. He has extensive film knowledge and the ability to handle the technical side of the position. Hunter was an intern for Springlee Financial as a video production intern. He's a graduate of Western Kentucky University with a bachelor's degree in broadcast communications and film. Hunter does understand that the contract between the City of Bowling Green and Harris Visuals LLC will be terminated following the completion and payment for the October Spotlight Edition. Do you have any questions?
I'll answer your questions from Ms. Erin. Congratulations, Hunter. We're proud for you. Any discussion or comments? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Denney, I'm sorry, Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2018-171.
Municipal order approving the appointment of Sabina Husick to the Human Rights Commission.
I'm moved.
Second. A Perigin, second by Nash. Ms. Husick is from Bosnian Heritage and was one of the individuals who coordinated the march to remember... Severnica? Severnica. Agreed to step in. One of the Human Rights Commission members, Gina DeZell, will be expiring, but Sabina will be taking Nancy Becker's place. You remember Nancy, who is a long-term member and chief financial officer at the Housing Authority, passed away last month, so we'll be filling that spot this evening. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2018-172.
Municipal order approving the reappointment of Huda Melkey and appointments of Brooke Justice and India Unseld to the Workforce Recruitment and Outreach Committee.
I'm moved.
Motion by Perigin, second by Nash. This is one reappointment. Huda Melkey has agreed to continue on with additional term, and Rick Starks and Alice Gatewood or Waddell are rotating off Brooke Justice. I think you'll find that her background at the Community and Technical College would be very helpful with this, along with, I think you know India pretty well from the...
I know India very well.
The fireworks committee this time for the Kiwanis did a wonderful job, and we follow her closely at Guaranteed Pest Control, because I get her, I get her emails, I mean, her Facebook pages all the time. But most importantly of all, she's Miss Watette's granddaughter.
Granddaughter, that's right.
There you go. So, I won't take any nose for an answer this time, right?
Yes, that's right.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, thank you very much. Municipal order 2018-173.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2019-02 for fiscal year 2019 Street Overlay from Scotty's Contracting and Stone LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of $2,240,271.18.
Moved. Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Williams, Mr. Mizel.
This is our annual bid for overlay for, this is for FY19, our current budget year. We went out for bid and received one bid from Scotty's. This is a little bit over our $2 million budget, but we did have a little bit of carryover from the prior year, and we have some fund balance we can use. Bid was a little higher than expected, but we still feel we need to go ahead and cover the full 18 miles and the 60 handicap ramp replacements that were planned for FY19. So, we are recommending your approval of Scotty's to do this work at the $2,240,271. Greg Meredith is here if you have any questions.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2018-174.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2018-63 for professional architectural and engineering services for fiscal year 2019 Sloan Convention Center Capital Projects from Branstad or Carroll Incorporated of Lexington, Kentucky in the amount of $51,500.
I'm moved.
Second.
By Williams, second by Perigin. Mr. Mizel.
Usually, the convention center board has met on these type of things, but you guys will not meet for another few weeks, but we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna put this on your agenda tonight, but this will be on your board agenda as well. This is a bid we went out for, RFP, for some work at Sloan Convention Center, looking for some architectural and engineering services to give us some direction on the generator replacement, the ballroom, A air wall addition. That's looking at whether we can divide that room into two or three smaller meeting spaces. They're gonna give us some feasibility study there. If they can, if we can do it, we'll let them draw the plans up. If we can't do it, then they're not gonna charge us for it, or we won't do anything more on it. But we're gonna look at making that room where you can divide it up into three, two or three rooms. And then the last piece there was the carpet replacement and the pre-function area, two and three renovation. That's the side lobby that's closest to the hotel, that connects to the hotel. We went out on July 12th with a pre-bid meeting, and 13 firms showed up for that meeting, but we only got five bids back. It was an evaluated bid, cost being 50% of the bid, and facilities coordinator David Hayner and Mike Grubbs looked at the proposals, and they are recommending Branstad or Carroll for the services for the amount of the $51,500. Neither one of those guys are here tonight, but Greg May can answer some questions, or we can try if you have any questions.
I'll answer your questions. We were alerted this was coming at the last meeting, even though they didn't have the final bids in, so...
Right.
And our next convention center meeting may be a dissolution of this convention center anyway, so... Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2018-175.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2019-04 for fiscal year 2019 Stormwater Mitigation Program Professional Services from Bacon Farmer Workman Engineering and Testing Incorporated of Paducah, Kentucky in the amount of $27,968.
I'm moved.
Second by Williams, Mr. Mizel.
For the FY19 storm mitigation program, there were, there's two locations we decided to work on. This was the intersection of, I think it's Rodeo, I don't wanna say Rodeo, but Rodeo Lane and McCausland Avenue, and also the 1200 block of Kenton Street. I believe that is right off Broadway there, where we had, there was an actual traffic accident there not too long ago. But we went out for bid, our request for proposals, and we're wanting a firm to give us some topographic survey, detailed hydraulic analysis of the existing conditions, and then give us a development and construction plan for how we can improve the drainage in these areas. There were seven proposals that came back in, evaluated bid, I think was based mostly on cost, but the firm of Bacon Farmer Workman Engineering Testing, Inc. are being recommended for the work at $27,968. They have done previous work for us back in 17. If you'll remember, they did work on East 5th, Loop Street, and Paddock Way, and we were pleased with what design work they did for us back then. So, Public Works is recommending them for this bid for $27,968. This is coming out of the Stormwater Mitigation Fund.
Call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, municipal order 2018-176.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2019-11 for full-service design for police evidence storage building from Branstad or Carroll Incorporated of Lexington, Kentucky in the amount of $42,000.
I'm moved.
Second.
Perigin, second by Williams, Mr. Mizel.
As part of the budget, we approved, or you all approved, a new police evidence storage building that would be on the corner of, the back corner of the police lot on Kentucky, actually on Adams, corner of Adams and 11th, 12th? 10th, sorry. Get my street mix up. We're looking at building a structure roughly 10 un-air-conditioned garage bays for storage. We have a need, we're actually renting space now for storage of evidence vehicles, so we decided to go with 10 bays with also some office space of about 1,500 for other evidence storage. This contract is for design and build. There will be a construction manager as part of this, full project until construction is complete. And this was an evaluated proposal with 50% being counted for cost and the experience and qualifications to follow. We received six proposals, and Branstad or Carroll is being recommended for this, this job at $42,000. And we have money available in our municipal facilities fund for this project. Greg Meredith is here in place of David Hayner if you have any questions.
Have a question? If you don't... When you talk about bays, I'm thinking storage building. This isn't gonna be just a metal shed building.
No, no, it's gonna blend in hopefully with the campus at the police department. You know, similar to what BGMU has. They've got the brick wall, not that we're gonna do a brick wall, but we're gonna make sure that it aesthetically is pleasing and fits in, so...
Roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Municipal order 2018-177.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2019-16 for Carriaca Spark Lighting Project from Stewart Ritchie Electrical of Bowling Green, Kentucky, and further authorizing the direct purchase of materials and supplies from Musco Sports Lighting LLC of, for a total project amount of $254,415.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Williams, Mr. Mizel.
This is also part of the FY19 capital improvement budget for parks. We were, we're planning on doing some lighting improvements at Carriaca's baseball fields. We went out for bid. I think this was a carefully spec'd bid, so this is a low cost, and, and we gave them a couple of different options. We priced it with, I think it's called metal halide, or is that proper? And LED lighting systems to give two alternatives. We also requested prices for remote controls as well as a 25-year warranty on these lights. We got five bids in. The committee has chosen to go with LED and with the remote control monitoring, monitoring capability along with the 25-year warranty. And Stewart Ritchie came in, Stewart Ritchie Electrical came in at the lowest cost of that with the $254,415 price. Parks is gonna purchase all of the materials to save on the price of them as long as, as well as the sales tax being exempt. And then Stewart Ritchie's gonna take care of the remove, removal of the current lighting and install the new lighting. I think it's the Musco Sports Lighting. And we'll have a 25-year warranty on this. So, we're recommending Stewart Ritchie Electrical for this project.
I'll answer your questions.
Brent Belcher's here if you have any questions.
One question I might have. The current lighting that's there that's going to be removed, are you thinking about moving that to a different park?
It'd be suitable. We would not, we not be using it anywhere else. It'd be disposed of. It's some of the oldest lighting that we have in our park system.
I didn't know if it was something that could be repurposed.
It wouldn't be suitable. That's why we're replacing it. It's, it's, it's not to, well, we wouldn't wanna move it and reuse it, I put it that way.
Okay.
Will this affect the tennis court lighting?
No, completely separate. Completely separate. Matter of fact, the LEDs, you have no spillover lights. This will be directional lighting, ray lighting, if you will. So, there'll be no spillover lighting associated with the park. A lot more directional in how it, how it works, so it...
That's good news.
Yeah, there'll be less. Yes, sir.
I do realize that you say it's, you wouldn't wanna put it anywhere else. Is, is that because it's, it would be dangerous to put it anywhere else? Or because the age of it?
It's, no, it's just at this point in time, it's, it's 25-year lighting at this point. It wouldn't be suitable to be used as a replacement tool. It's not any worse, or I'd say it's not any better than current lightings we have throughout the rest of our system. It's wooden pole system right now, so it's some of our oldest lighting that we have in our entire system. It's past, it's served its time, I put it that way, and it's life expectancy time.
And the reason I ask is I just wonder if, if, if it has, if it has any life left in it, could we use it at, say, the, I hate to refer to it as the landfill, but the walking track we have at the old landfill to bring some light into that area off a river road?
In my opinion, that lighting would not be walking trail lighting. This would be ballpark lighting, so it's probably two different lighting systems that we're talking about there. The wooden poles would not be suitable for, for use. It's really something that you wanna try to steer away from at this point, wooden poles and with athletic field. So, I don't, I think you're talking about sports lighting as compared with pedestrian lighting, would be two different things, in my opinion, that we talked about. The trail lighting at Lover's Lane, we just installed a couple of years ago, would be more appropriate, I think, for the trail that you might be talking about there. That would be, you know, a lot less height on your poles, not, not quite the, the...
Intensity?
Yeah, the, the top, the height you're looking at, the sports lighting would not be what you're looking for for, for that. You'd be lighting up a lot more than just the trail at the, at the landfill with that.
And I don't know that that's a bad thing.
It may not be.
I hear you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, municipal order 2018-178.
Municipal order approving a contract through cooperative purchase with Motorola Solutions of Schaumburg, Illinois through Mobile Communications of Bowling Green Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky under Kentucky State Pricing Contract for the purchase of 73 mobile radios in the total amount of $264,616.24.
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Williams, Mr. Mizel.
Excuse me. The police department is wanting to purchase the remaining amount of 73 police radios. These are compatible with the new 800 radio system, and this is actually pretty much sole source from Motorola. This is, this, I was looking back. This states it's a state price contract, but actually Motorola is beating the state contract price, probably about, like, $1,500 apiece at roughly $3,600 per radio. So, that's gonna total to the $264, or $264,616. This would be the last group of radios, I'm told, to complete the, the full complement of radios for the police department. So, recommending this purchase for police, I think. Is Chief here?
He is.
Chief, can you answer any questions you have?
I'll answer your questions. Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, municipal order 2018-179.
Municipal order authorizing the acceptance of a grant through the 2017 Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Program from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency in the amount up to $1,272,277.
I'm moved. Second.
By Nash, second by Williams, Mr. Mizel.
This was a great award that we recently found out about. I'd like to give kudos to Nick Cook?
Yes.
And Chief Coulson and all of his staff at the fire department for working on this grant. It's a wonderful thing. $1,272,000. It's pretty amazing. And the way this thing breaks out, me being a finance guy, I wanted to look at the average. Over the, over those three years, we're gonna be receiving average of 62% of our personnel cost. But you see the breakdown in your packets. First year, it's a 75, 25 split. Second year, again, 75, 25 split. And then the third year, grant picks up 35%, and we pick up the 65%. We have roughly six months to get these guys recruited and hired, and then we have a period of between, after that, a period of five years, or, I'm sorry, three years to get this thing spent down and used. So, I'd just like to congratulate Nick and Jason and all their, their group on the work they did on this grant. It's an incredible achievement. It's something we were hoping for, but we planned also on the budget side for it in case we didn't get it, so we can reallocate some, some funds and maybe sock... maybe sock some away for the future to cover into that, in that last third year where we pick up the sixty-five percent. So they're here to answer any questions you all may have about this, how we're going to go about it, but that's kind of the nuts and bolts of it.
I'll answer a question.
Way to go.
Thank you.
Nice job. I know, I know that you don't do it all by yourself, and Chief Coulson and all his crew helped with all the information, but Nick Cook sits in a little office hunting for money all day long, and he has done so much for the city, I just want you to know how much I appreciate it. Digging for dollars.
And he finds it, that's great.
Dialing for dollars too, I'm sure.
Good thing we don't pay him on commission.
Please call the roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand eighteen one eighty.
Municipal order authorizing submission of a land and water conservation fund outdoor recreation legacy partnership program grant, application to the National Park Service in the amount of seven hundred fifty thousand for the Bowling Green Riverfront area improvements.
I'm moved.
Motion by Perrigen, second by Nash, Mr. Mizel.
I'd like to ask Brent Childers, our Neighborhood Community Services Director, to come up and give you an overview of this submission we're about to make.
Thank the city manager and mayor commissioners for the opportunity to come talk to you about riverfront development. This is something that we talked about at last, I think, retreat back in the winter. We started meeting with property owners. Mr. Hanks is here, Eddie Hanks, who's kind of the chief property owner along the river street corridors, as I'll call him, who's been working with our office quite a bit on trying to get some activities going in that corridor. Two years ago, we stood before you and made this same request to submit a grant to the outdoor recreation legacy partnership program. We were not successful in that bid. So this year, we want to produce the most competitive application that we can. And part of that, we felt like we were lacking in a couple of areas. One, really on the partnership side, so that's why I asked Eddie to be here tonight. We've included some support from him as part of our partnership with the private community for the development of this park. And keep in mind, as this competitive process continues, eligibility for this grant is fifty thousand in population and up. So we're at the bottom end of the eligibility for this, so our competitors are much larger cities in this. We need to produce the most competitive grant that we can. So I stand before you tonight asking for you to over-match the grant. That's not something we have done in the past. Been in reviewing the guidelines, Nick made me aware that pretty much if you just match at the minimum, you get no points. So you have to match, you have to bring more match to the table than just the minimum. So tonight's municipal order is also requesting that we put up a two-to-one match, where the city commits two point, one point five million dollars of match as part of this seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. We expect, if we hear something, it would be in the spring, so we would have time to budget and do everything accordingly from that point on. But we felt like we needed to make the most competitive application that we could. We're trying to tie up as many of our loose ends or our weak points as part of this application to really see the riverfront get redeveloped. At the next retreat, we'll be presenting a river street corridor enhancement plan that will kind of showcase how we want to go about making some of the improvements moving forward. And one piece of that is, without outside, a large investment of outside dollars, these things are going to take time. So if we are successful in this grant, that helps us speed up the improvements that we want to do in that area. I think included with your packet, if not as part of the grant, is a master plan. It's very similar to the master plan that we had two years ago, with a focus on the boat ramp, fishing access, bouldering facilities, disc golf, site furnishing, site improvements, and really taking this from what we call the old landfill to the riverfront park. And that's what we're trying to really do, is change the mindset, change the view, change the attitudes of how people see these roughly sixty acres of recreation space. So with that, I'll close and answer any questions or concerns anyone might have.
Does Hank have anything that he'd like to add?
Just appreciate the city's input and recognizing the opportunity to turn down that.
One of the really neat things that I like about this project is, you know, one of the things that I sometimes personally get accused of is being big government, and that government is constantly generating projects for the city. This particular project is much different, in my opinion, because Mr. Hanks and his group, a group of citizens, a group of property owners, people who have made an investment into a part of town that maybe others wouldn't see as a place to make an investment, got together and dreamt about a project that they wanted to put together, and that they then brought forward to the city rather than the government bringing it to the citizens. And I think that the city is indebted to Mr. Hanks and to the other property owners that are out there for maybe seeing the diamond in the lump of coal that some people see it as, whether that's making a change like the name of the street that is out in front. But I think their ideas, every little idea they have, get us a little bit closer to turning that particular area of the city of Bowling Green into a very desirable area for people to go to. So to Mr. Hanks' credit and perseverance to continue to work on it, you know, year after year, month after month, to continue to bring people together to talk about good things for the city of Bowling Green.
I agree with Slim, and I'm just glad we're looking at what can be out there. So it's, there's a lot of potential.
Our plan would be, this would be a multi-year project. We would try our best to avoid issuing any debt on it, trying to, you know, do phases at a time. You know, if we could get this grant, that would really be a good kickstart to this project. We could do a lot with this first two-point-two million dollars, but from then on, we feel like we could, you know, budget it accordingly to do more and more each year over a series of years. So that's kind of our plan in a way on the financial side, so.
If you, you know, the first meeting that I got invited to by Mr. Hanks, and walked in, and there was a room full of people that all own property out there, and they asked me to envision other towns that had water, and what those towns, what those cities, those municipalities did with waterfronts, and it is significantly different than what we do with our waterfront down there. So I like that we're thinking of a multi-year plan, that we can do something different with that area that a lot of people may not see, like Commissioner Williams said, you know, to have a vision of what can be there and not just what is there now.
Personally, I would, I would just like to be able to see the area and see the water, so I think we can do a lot with that, so.
Call the roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, municipal order two thousand eighteen one eighty-one.
Municipal order authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into grant agreements for select neighborhood action program grants from various neighborhoods.
I'm moved.
Second. Perrigen, second. Mizel.
I'd like to ask Ms. Karen Foley, our Neighborhood Services Coordinator, to come up and make her recommendation for our annual SNAP grant awards.
Ms. Foley?
This is the twentieth time that I have stood in front of a city commission and made recommendations for our SNAP grants. And every time I do it, I'm always first and foremost very grateful that the city of Bowling Green continues to prioritize our neighborhoods and our neighborhood groups as worthy of continued investment. So I just want to say thank you to each of you for signing on every year, and of course to Mr. DeFebo and Mr. Mizel for continuing to sign on with this budget every year. In twenty years, we have seen a lot of evolution in our neighborhoods and in our neighborhood groups, and we try to stay on top of that evolution in adjusting our program guidelines as we need to. This year, we have seven applicants, and a lot of those are very different from one another. And I think if you look over the list of the projects, there's a wide range of projects, but we are confident that these kinds of projects are the specific kinds of things that are needed in those particular neighborhoods. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about any of the individual projects. I have texted and/or emailed with all of the applicants, and of course, I didn't require them to come and show up today, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have about any of the projects.
I'm going to sound like a broken record to the last statement that I made, but again, these are the kind of projects that are driven by citizens. This isn't government going out and asking anybody to do anything. These are citizens that live in neighborhoods and with your direction and your input come up with the ideas that they can do to make their own neighborhoods better. And so I appreciate the work that you do. It's interesting to me, the range of costs from, you know, from the lowest amount of five hundred dollars as a way to make an improvement into a neighborhood, up to the largest amount of seventy-five hundred. And it shows that if people are willing to work in their neighborhoods and come up with ideas, they in fact can do so.
Yes. We like to see, you know, folks show some innovation, and if I think about the kinds of projects that we funded the very first year, you know, twenty grant cycles ago, and then where we are today, some of those needs have changed. Some of the projects that neighborhoods had on their list, they were able to check those off the list, and, you know, they don't have a need to ask us for any project money, so... But with twenty years of time passing, you know, necessarily we have to adjust how those program guidelines work and what the kinds of projects that we want to see. And of course, we're going to continue to reach out to all of our residents regardless of the kind of housing that they live in, and try to encourage them to take advantage of this project and to help them along the way as we can.
Well, we've seen some great changes in some neighborhoods because of this program, and, you know, the pride that exists that among these groups sometimes with a, when they come to a completion of a project and they can see the results, it's amazing the transformation that has occurred, so.
Thank you.
It's a good thing.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Ash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, first reading of ordinance BG two thousand eighteen thirty-nine.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning attractive land containing one point seven nine nine acres from GB General Business to LI Light Industrial located at one forty Hunter Court, presently owned by Rose Valley Banquet Hall LLC.
I'm moved.
Second. Perrigen, second by Williams. First reading of the unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning to rezone this property. Mr. Peterson is here if you have any comments or questions. Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, order two thousand eighteen one eighty-two.
Municipal order approving a job development incentive program employee withholdings credit agreement with Covey Aluminum Automotive Products LLC.
I'm moved.
Second. Perrigen, second by Nash.
I'm going to turn it over to Katie Schaller Ward, our new job development incentive program manager, to present this to you.
Thank you.
Lots of other things.
It's a little odd to be on this side of the table, so...
One more title.
Yeah. Forgive me. We did have a job development incentive request from Covey Aluminum Automotive Products. The Job Development Incentive Committee spoke about this last month, or, yes, last month, it's September now. This is a one percent match for an expansion project in the South Industrial Park. They're going to create a hundred and twelve new jobs and have a total capital investment of about fifty-five million dollars. This is a ten-year incentive program where we match one percent to the state's three percent, so our one percent incentive would give them five hundred and twenty-two thousand six hundred and forty dollars over the ten-year period.
I'll answer your questions.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, first reading of ordinance BG two thousand eighteen forty.
Ordinance amending Code of Ordinances, ordinance amending Chapters Two Administration, eighteen occupational license fees and taxes, and twenty-five Code of Ethics of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances to reflect changes in organizational structure.
I'm moved.
Second. Perrigen, second.
These are, these are some cleanup actions for these three chapters of our Code of Ordinances to account for the title changes of Assistant City Manager, Chief Financial Officer, and then some other minor additions like the procurement, moving over to finance, things like that. But Katie and Jean worked on this, and can answer any questions that you might have.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, two thousand eighteen one eighty-three.
Municipal order adopting modern and accurate legal description of territory previously annexed by ordinance number BG ninety-seven thirty.
Second.
Motion by Perrigen, second by Williams, Mr. Mizel.
This is a continuation of all the cleanup we're doing with the Secretary of State's Office to update our legal description and our maps. This was an annexation done back in ninety-seven. I believe this is for the Greystone area, kind of between Nashville Road and Russell Road, and this is to make the Secretary of State happy, so we ask for your approval to send this off.
Comments or questions?
I might be the only one.
Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, I'll take a brief recess while I obtain the public comment sheet and be right back. Please call the roll.
Ash.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. I'll take a brief recess while I obtain the public comment sheet and be right back.
Hey, everyone. I'm Jeremy McFarland. I just wanted to share some good news with everyone. Last month, Maysville became the 10th city in Kentucky to pass a fairness ordinance. Maysville city leaders voted unanimously to add a fairness ordinance to existing anti-discrimination legislation on their own, showing that their community's doors are open to all who live in and visit Maysville. Leaders from Maysville and nine other cities around the Commonwealth have stood up to show that they value, respect, and strive to protect all people who choose to live and work in their communities. These leaders agree that all Kentuckians deserve basic human rights in employment, housing, and public accommodations. As a citizen of Bowling Green, I am saddened by the fact that Bowling Green remains the largest city in Kentucky to not support these basic protections. It is past time that Bowling Green City Commission stand up and acknowledge the inherent value of all citizens. The citizens of Bowling Green are ready for fairness, and I believe that after November, we will have a city commission that reflects that. I'm eager to see Bowling Green a city that I consider my home to join the other 10 cities that have already made history by passing fairness ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Moreland?
How you doing? My name's Jennifer Moreland. Okay, what I'm gonna say is crazy, and you might think it's completely out of my mind. But right now, we need a second homeless shelter, and we do. Okay? And what I'm doing is I'm talking to Salvation Army and asking them how, how much it's gonna cost to get a building, okay, and find out how much it's gonna cost and see how much money we can raise, or how much money the city can help or whatever. But we do need another homeless shelter. We do need. It's begging, it's getting bigger and bigger. Now, also, we need a fraud department and the police force, and I still believe that, you know, I still believe that. And I still believe that we need to stand up for the fairness. And I know you don't want to, and I understand, but just, it's just, it's sad, because if you had, if you had a son or daughter that's going through this, I think you would actually vote. I think if you knew somebody personally, you wouldn't do this. So it's just, it's just a thought. And also, I would like something that's really interesting, and I'm studying on it. The filtration, the water, trying to find a cleaner way to clean water, you know? And it's interesting, because I'm trying to clean the water system right now, finding a cheaper way to not use chlorine. And so I'm trying to do that. And I don't know if I can do it, but I would like to try. Because, you know, people do get sick with fluoride and stuff like that. And so I would like to find a way to clean water instead of using chemicals. So that's where I am. If anybody wants to help me in the homeless shelter, you know, I'm having a meeting Wednesday at 11 o'clock with the corner and the director, and we're gonna sit down and see how much it's gonna cost to find a building and stuff like that. So just let me know. Because, and I still want to have a class for suicide prevention, too. So if anybody's interested. And so that's what's going on. So if anybody's interested in helping me, let me know. And I'm.
Your time has expired, Jennifer. Thank you. That's the last name I have on the list. Our next meeting is going to be a special work session on the 25th. Is that correct? 25th? So we will not have our regular September 18th meeting. And if we have a special call, we'll let everybody know. Thank you very much.